Welcome, everyone. If you could please take your seats. Well, welcome to the San Marcos City Council meeting for September 10th, 2024. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this evening, we have an invocation from Tracy Moss with North Coast Church. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Let us pray. Gracious Father, we come before you today as we gather for this council meeting. We ask for your presence and guidance as this council seeks to make decisions that will benefit our community and its residents. God, we thank you for Richard, who has been an integral part of our community, that has shown great leadership and endeavors. We ask that you would continue to bless him. We also thank you for the girls on the softball team, takes great diligence, strength, and grit to win a national championship. Will you continue to bless them and keep them safe as they embark on this new season? Lord, we ask that you would grant your wisdom to make sound and just decisions, compassion to understand the needs of our citizens, and unity to work together for the common good. Will you help these city leaders to listen with open hearts and minds, to speak with honesty and respect, and to act with integrity and fairness? We humbly ask for your blessings upon our city, its leaders, and its residents. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, next up is the roll call. Mr. Skulik?
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sannella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
Okay, first up is going to be the Smile Award, and that'll be Councilmember Nunez. Did you want to give the presentation and go down there, or do you want to do it?
No, let's go down there.
Okay, perfect. All right.
You'll join me.
I'm going to ask Richard Oravitz and Mary to join me up here for our presentation. Please come up.
Thank you for being here, Richard.
Sorry, I want to be able to hear you so that the audience can hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Richard, thank you for being here this evening. This is really historic for the city and for us.
I'm sorry. Can we get you to start over? We have to turn this on.
Testing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Richard, for being here today. This is historic. Richard, you're known for being brilliant, a philosopher, a deep thinker, and a poet, a walking encyclopedia, a voracious reader, a pillar of this community, a local luminary, a thinker of ideas, and a planter of ideas. Someone who loves to discuss things and new ideas, and makes us think and explore new ideas. And for having deep thoughts about life, and a vast knowledge of so many different topics. A grower of plants and a grower of ideas, a problem solver. For being connected to the earth, for being a fountain of knowledge in all things agriculture. Your courage in dealing with problems. You're known for being intellectually flexible in pursuit of new ideas. Your willingness to share knowledge and your ability to educate everybody so easily about any subject matter is unmatched. To quote former council member Randy Walton, who joins us today, you are a walking North County history. All of this is true, but you're also revered for your sense of beauty and connection to the land and nature. This profound insight, I believe, serves to guide you and find the beauty in the simple things in life, and together, without having to ponder the biggest mysteries of life, really, while all while upholding your beliefs. And we visually see this in the santuario, the sanctuary that you have built for you and your family, and really for the rest of us who are innately drawn to it. All of these attributes are true, but what stands out for me the most is your unwavering dedication to recognizing the equal worth and dignity of all people. Above all, you care for human beings, and you care for our community and our collective well-being. You show your compassion and concerns for those who are not well-treated by our society in your everyday life. I seek to emulate your innate uncompromising resolve and willingness to take a stand for what is right. As I contemplate the significance, Richard, of having you in our region, and especially in our city of San Marcos, I was reminded by a fellow luminary that really is following your path. I was reminded of Chilam Balam, the elite spiritual leaders of the Mayan culture revered for their wisdom, whose social positions are similar to those of priests. Chilam is the name of the greatest spiritual leader. His words were considered to be directly from the gods and were accorded the highest importance in the complex society of the Mayas. Richard, you serve in the same position in our North County region, and especially in the city of San Marcos. Similar to Chilam, Richard, you are revered by your family, by countless individuals from all walks of life, and you have inspired and influenced a long line of leadership in our city. You are our very own Chilam of San Marcos, Richard. Thank you. Because of your unique significance and contributions to shaping our community, it really is befitting that we memorialize by being a recipient of our Smile Award. As we face insurmountable challenges like our housing crisis, our climate change, and water droughts, food and energy shortages, my hope is that this recognition shines a light on your courageous life, led by example, and inspires a deep reflection on how each and every one of us, especially our youth, to respond courageously to meet the challenges of our time. And to end my remarks, I'm going to share a quote by Ralph Waldo Emerson, and I think you might even approve, Richard. "Do not go where the path may lead. Go instead where there is no path and leave a trail."
Gracias, María. Por todo lo que me ha estado. It's not the easiest thing to talk, you know. So all you little kids, practice up because you have a whole life ahead of you. María's giving me this award in the city of San Marcos. When I don't have too many days left, I mean, I'm not asking you to cry or be caring that I'm gonna... We're all gonna die, and it's a bad thing to say that to young people because you have such a promise of all the life ahead of you. You make your own history. There's that guy back there, Paul. He just gave me a book to read. My God, it's a book called Palo Alto. Palo Alto. That means the tall branch. Written by a socialist guy, but it's that thick, you know? So you got to learn to read well. There's a lot of stuff to read. And you got to care and respect people, and care and respect nature. Be somos respetuosos. We've got to be respectful of everything in life, and other people, and all people. Well, I didn't come to give a speech, but I want to thank you again for all that you've done. And it is true, Randy, you know, for being an example, then other people are going to say, "Well, one day I'm going to get that award." You could get this award one day. Yeah. I mean, if the earth doesn't burn up, and the water lasts, and people don't kill each other off. It's very sad that we're not respectful and kind and caring because loving each other is the nicest thing in the whole life. I love my wife, and my kids, and Shoney, and Rena, and my grandchild, Ellie. There's a picture that María has. Where did you do that picture? Oh, it is? Yes, see? See that one picture down in the bottom? It's my family when we used to farm vegetables, right up Twin Oaks Valley. Boy, I grew a lot of good vegetables up Twin Oaks Valley. People still come to us and say, "Where are those peas? We want the peas. We want the tomatoes. We want the peppers. We want the..." Something. It's good soil, and you can make it. And the best thing to grow is your heart inside. Grow your heart and be respectful of everything in life. Thank you very much, María. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you, Richard. And thank you, Mary, for being here.
People ask about legacy. This is the best legacy anybody could have.
Richard's been around a long time. I know him back in the day before I was on the city council, when he was on the Palomar College Board. So that's been, what, 22 years? 23 years? Anyway, good to see you again. Okay, next up is our girls. Mayhem. And I'm dying to know who thought up this name for these ladies. Anyway, so if we could have everyone come up, we're going to start with the coaches. Bobby Flood, Mike Gonzalez, AJ Egoian? Egoian. Egoian! Egoian, sorry. And Kevin Tacist... Wherever you like. You're the one who's going to help me bring up these girls.
Oh, wonderful.
But I have to say, did you come up with the name Mayhem?
I've been known to encourage team names.
So you've all entold them?
I gave them some voting, and this is what we landed on.
Okay, well, so Bobby, we have this for you.
Outstanding, thank you.
Should I hold on to these while you go through? You might be a hand talker, like me.
I might be.
Yeah.
Can I put this up here?
Yes, you can. It's so beautiful.
It is.
Okay, so we're going to bring up you ladies. Let's start out with Mabel Swink. Come on down.
Come on down, Mabel.
All right, Sam Byer. Sam. Emma Spiegel. Today. It could go very badly. Max Mesa. Bryn Lee Flood. Mila Tilling. Ellie Hernandez. Cassidy Hire. Alicia Heard. Kyle Byer. Wait, are they siblings?
They're twins.
Twins! Wait, wait. Okay, we're going to have to sit next to each other. That's awesome. Mia Egoian. Okay, I nailed it that time. Olivia Tacistro. I'm on a roll, watch out. Sophia Gonzalez. Dacey Hopkins. All right, we need to find out how this all happened because I heard it was really exciting. I saw this on Facebook and I went, "What? What did they just do?" So come and talk about it. Tell us what happened. Really?
Yes.
Wait, when you were out there, was it hot back then, too?
So at the state tournament, it was 117 degrees in the shade.
Wow.
We played six games in that.
All right, that's pretty incredible.
And I think one of the most incredible... I actually thought that that was going to be the pinnacle of our season. I mean, no team from San Marcos has ever played in the state championship game. So for us to make it there, it was such a blessing. And these girls just persevered the entire time. It was something that was, I'll remember forever. And then, as other teams kind of let the heat get to them and go the other direction, for whatever reason, these special 14 over there, they decided to go the other direction. And they found energy, and they brought energy. And other teams would look at them, they would be out before the game dancing in the heat. And these other teams would be under shade with spritzers and towels, and they're looking... Yeah, they're looking out going, "What is wrong with them?" But we just kept winning, kept winning. We made it to that championship game. And then we had a three-week break. We went to Oregon for the Western National Championships for the 10-and-under division. And we just kept winning, and we kept winning, and we kept winning, and we made it to kind of the championship day, not having lost a game yet in that tournament. And we lost our first game of the day, which put us down into the loser's bracket. We played one more game to make it into the championship game against the team that we lost. And in softball terms, we double-dipped them. We beat them two games in a row to take the championship home. And first time in San Marcos history that you got a national champion.
I still pick it over the 117 degrees weather.
I mean, we started at 6:00 in the morning that day, and as soon as you got out of the car, you knew you were in for it. But yeah, we kept going. We started at 6:00 in the morning, and I think our last game ended at about 10:30 at night.
Wow.
And we had a blast. And we had a blast, by the way. It was very memorable. It was not cruel. Promise.
I think they deserve a huge applause for all of that.
I'd love to say thank you for the city of San Marcos to have a facility like we have at Bradley Park. There have been upgrades there that have extremely helped out the entire San Marcos girl softball. But we were the beneficiaries of the extra batting cage and some of those things, so appreciate that. Keep that stuff coming. We'll put it to good use. And I want to definitely thank my coaching staff and the girls for all of their efforts. But I think the parents deserve a big thank you as well because the community that we built within this team was extraordinary.
Well, I have to make one observation.
Okay.
I'm happy that the girls did so great, but we want to see what you ladies are going to do next year. Is this your first year playing together?
So this team, right? Like, this team was our first time together, but many of them have played together in the past. So the way that the age divisions work, this is a combination of some, in the 10-and-under division at the time, some second-year players and some first-year players. So the second-year players, we've now moved on to the 12-and-under division. And so that's going to be just a whole new bag of worms.
Well, we want to have you back next year.
Okay, we'd like to be back next year. Yes, for sure, for sure, for sure.
And they don't call us San Marcos for nothing.
They don't?
No.
Okay.
No, it's definitely...
They call us champions now.
I like that. All right, I'm going to give these to you, and then let's go take a picture.
Outstanding.
It's seriously amazing. Thank you.
We got our rings, too. Holy cow, it came with all the hardware. Thank you. We are, too.
All right, start smiling.
Hey, someone put this up front. Don't drop it. Dacey, just hold our rings. Oh, yeah. Look at how excited she is.
And again, to the parents. My daughter plays soccer. It's a hard job getting them to all the practices and everything. And thank you for letting them come tonight to be honored. It's really special. And congratulations again, ladies. Really exciting. All right, does anyone know what this month is? National Preparedness Month. It's a hot one, too. Yeah. Anyway, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes National Preparedness Month. And who is coming down? Jamie Smith, the emergency manager. Yes, there you are. Oh, Jamie is our little rock star. She's got so much energy. She makes me want to do her job. Anyway, National Preparedness Month is this month. It's the FEMA. FEMA has designated September as National Preparedness Month, and California residents commonly experience the effects of various disasters ranging from severe winter storms... Not right now. It's very, very hot weather. Major earthquakes, and devastating wildfires, so make sure you don't start any fires out there on accident, resulting in damages costing hundreds of millions of dollars. The San Marcos Fire Department, in collaboration with North Zone Public Safety Agencies, continues its dedicated efforts to enhance community outreach, ensuring that residents are well-informed about the importance of disaster preparedness and the utilization of new alert and warning systems at both individual and institutional levels. In the aftermath of the significant fires in 2000... In the aftermath of the significant fires in 2014-17, nearly 46,000 San Marcos residents have demonstrated their commitment to emergency preparedness by registering with Alert San Diego. Are you gonna talk about our new tool that we have on our phones? I, okay, I'm just thinking about it in advance, because it really is quite amazing. Anyway, reflecting a strong community investment in comprehensive emergency planning and preparedness, the city of San Marcos has proactively adopted the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan 2023, a strategic initiative designed to significantly enhance our preparedness, emergency management capabilities, and overall community safety. The mayor and the former, and the members of the San Marcos City Council strongly urge all residents to be mindful of the reality that following an emergency, self-sufficiency for several days may be necessary. Being prepared means having essential supplies, including food, water, and other necessities. I did my little Costco run today, to last for at least 72 hours. Residents are encouraged to visit Ready San Diego to access a comprehensive list of supplies for building a personal emergency kit. And if you might notice, around town, we actually have up signs to remind you when you're driving. Therefore, we, the city of San Marcos, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as National Preparedness Month. So it doesn't talk about the app, so... Oh, here, yes, our fire open house is coming up, and there's the app, the Genesis Protect. It is amazing, and it's actually alerted me already, so.
Did it?
It did, it did. So, anyway, I'm gonna give this to you, Jamie, and if you'd like to say a couple of words, that would be great.
Again, we encourage everybody to download this brand-new app. It launched in May. It keeps our residents informed not only of our local events, but as well as events happening throughout the state. So with a lot of fires going on, you might be curious about messaging that's going on for those, maybe you have family members, you can use this app to understand real-time information for that as well. So again, please encourage your community to download this app and register also with Alert San Diego.
And Jamie, one quick question?
Yep.
How many addresses can you actually put in there? I think it's more than one.
Oh, yes, it's up to five.
Up to five. So if you have a family member that might need your help, you can actually register that too.
Save it.
And it'll give you alerts, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Of course. We're gonna take a quick picture, because... Okay, next up, oh, our sheriff department has something, they're going to come up and do the presentation. Yep. I kept looking in my calendar, and I was saying, what is this Rise Above? I didn't put any information, so now I know what that is. Very excited to hear all about this.
All right, good evening. My name is Deputy Mike Benninger. I'm with the San Marcos Cops Team at the San Marcos Station with the San Diego County Sheriff's Office. We're gonna be presenting the Rise Above Sheriff Youth Leadership Program. This is gonna be a pilot program that's based in San Marcos and Vista to start, and the goal is to go countywide in San Diego once we launch this pilot project, and it goes very well. That's the, that's the goal here. So this was a project that was initiated by the Cops Team, which is the community-oriented policing and problem-solving in both San Marcos and Vista Station. We chose North County to start, and these are just the deputies and cops teams, as well lieutenant and captains that are involved with both the stations. Our location's gonna be held at the Boys and Girls Club of San Marcos at One Positive Way in San Marcos. We have a bunch of confirmed partners. It's gonna be the Boys and Girls Club, obviously we're hosting the event. That's gonna be the city of San Marcos. The San Marcos Unified School District, Star Pal, which is the Police Athletic League, and they're gonna be able to donate equipment for us to set up on our Week Five, which I'll go over very shortly. True Care, the health care that's on Valprado and City of San Marcos. Our San Marcos Prevention Coalition, the Vista Community Clinic, and a bunch of good food places that, we'll get into that later as well, but we're gonna feed everybody for each week as well. We want to remove as much friction as possible and have everybody, parents, I'm not a parent, I don't have kids, but I can understand. We have this at 6:00 PM, I can only imagine going to school, going to school, picking the kids up. They're gonna be tired, the parents, I'm sure, have work, probably, let's just say, a basic nine-to-five. And by the time that they get home, the last thing they want to do is get the kids ready, cook, clean, and then show up at 6 o'clock to our program. So I want to try and remove as much friction as possible, and we're gonna provide dinner and cleanup for that as well. So we're gonna have Chick-fil-A, which they're gonna sponsor our graduation. It's gonna be a joint graduation, we're gonna get into that a little bit later too, as well, for our Week Eight. Starbucks, Raising Canes. We have a donating partner, Kiwanis Club of Lake San Marcos. And migrant education, which I'll cover as well, a little bit later, of what they're providing for us, which is a huge benefit. Going over our program budget, it's basically comprised of deputy and civilian overtime, our uniform shirts, which we do have one example here that we can hold up just for everybody to see, the food and beverages, and the activity supplies, mostly for the kids. The supplies are gonna be from Star Pal, which we're gonna play soccer on Week Five, we'll cover that a little bit down the road here. We have notebooks and pens for the kids, and a bunch of swag. We're gonna have sheriff's department-related swag, and we're also, I can't say too much, but we're contacting some big names that are outside of the sheriff's department for other swag as well. So once that's confirmed, you guys will get some more information here. This is what our course agenda's gonna look like. It's gonna be eight weeks. Seven of the weeks are gonna be content. For Week One, we're gonna have our introduction, and we're gonna have our special guest speaker, Dr. Villarreal, who is a community partner with the city of Vista, and she draws a huge crowd, probably around 300 people each time that she does a presentation. Unfortunately, we'll get into numbers, I keep pushing everything back later in the presentation, but we'll get into numbers here in a little bit as well. But she's gonna basically be teaching the parent section of this. She's gonna inform the parents on what to look for, and how to best educate their children and create a good bond, so that they can have an open line of communication as well. And as far as on the kid's side, so we're gonna basically have parent mandatory attendance, so we're gonna have some combination between the parents and kids, but mostly they're gonna be split. And the main reason for this is we have a much smaller attention span for children. We're looking for nine-to-12-year-olds, and we're already full on signups of just nine-to-12-year-olds. So we've been told we have about a minute per year of how old they are of attention span. So we're looking at maybe 10 to 15 minutes, if we're lucky with the kids, to get the information across. We'll do that at the very beginning. And then we'll also have activities, workshops, and interactions with our collaborating partners as well as deputies for the rest of that time. We're looking at about 60 minutes for the parents to get education across and provide them with a bunch of resources as well. Our Week Number Two is gonna be gang-focused. This is a gang prevention course, but we don't want this just to be fully gang-related for every seven weeks. We want to provide gang prevention through providing positive lifestyle resources, and that's what's included with the rest of this. So Week Number Two, we're also gonna have a split group. The parents will be educated for approximately 60 minutes, while the kids are about 15 minutes, and then we're also gonna break off into scenarios where we're starting to see, at the sheriff's department, we have school resources officers. The kids, the reason why we're targeting nine-to-12-year-olds, at first I thought this was extremely young, and we're starting to see more and more kids that are 10 years old, that are getting indoctrinated into these gangs, so they need to be educated. And we want to provide them a good foundation of when they are quote-unquote "hit up," which is basically trying to get these kids into a gang. We don't want it to be their first time, or they're caught off-guard, maybe they say something wrong, maybe they do wind up going down this path in the gang lifestyle. If we can intervene, and we can give them something to say that either won't get them in trouble, and that can curb this lifestyle, then that's a positive, and that's definitely a win for this program.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
What are the ages that the parents should be bringing their kids for this?
So we are nine-to-12-years-old.
Nine-to-12-years-old, and it starts, what's the start date?
For us, it's gonna be September 17th, and for Vista, it'll be September 12th, so they are right around the corner.
Okay.
So Week Number Three, we're gonna do physical wellness, that's gonna be our collaborating partner, True Care. They're gonna provide presentations on healthy eating, healthy habits, the importance of sleep, and they're gonna bring their mobile unit. It's basically an interactive unit where, depends on the size of the group that wants to run through, but at the bare minimum, we can do height and weight. That might not be something that somebody is able to get readily available, or, so we want to provide that as well. We're gonna have, hopefully, multiple of these, at least two sessions per year, and then multiple as this continues on throughout many more years. They have a variety of different mobile units that they can bring, including basically a dentist, where they can perform very basic functions or cleanings for kids, so that is something that we're, I spoke with them the other day, we're looking to implement in the future. So we're excited to have them. Week Number Four is gonna be PERT, it's our psychiatric emergency response team. It's gonna be covering mental wellness, that's gonna be a split session as well between the parents and the kids. We're gonna cover bullying and social media, mostly for the kids, and that's gonna be for the parents as well, how to monitor social media. I feel like I'm pretty up to speed with the amount of apps and stuff like that that's on social media right now, but I can't even keep up, let alone parents that are very busy and they don't know how to interact with the phone. So we're gonna catch them up to speed and get them good resources as well. Week Five is gonna be just over that halfway mark, and we want that to be strictly a fun time with the deputies. There's gonna be no educational content. It's gonna be where we're partnered with Star Pal, they're gonna bring out soccer equipment for us. We have the gym next door to the Boys and Girls Club rented out for, it's gonna, instead of a Tuesday, it's gonna be moved to a Saturday, we have full operation of that gym. It was limited for the other days of the week, and so we're just gonna play sports with the kids, just be normal people, they can see us in a normal light and realize that we are good people there, that are there to help. And it's not every time that you see a deputy or law enforcement that it's a negative connotation or a negative interaction, or we're only there for bad things, we're there to help. And we want to see these kids in the community afterwards, and have that bond where they know if they're in need of any resources, or they just want to talk to a deputy or and say hi, and they saw us in a program in the past, we're there for that, and we want to create that bond. Week Number Six, we're gonna be partnered with our San Marcos Prevention Coalition, that's gonna be for drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. That's gonna be a split session as well. We're gonna introduce, basically show these kids what, basically different packaging and stuff like that for either candy or chips. There's a lot of things that contain THC or fentanyl, or a lot of things that can be misconstrued that kids are getting into nowadays, and so we want to provide that education so that we can prevent overdoses and unnecessary deaths. We also want to introduce a canine demo. The kids always love that, when we go out and the canines are able to go track and locate mock drugs. They have the same odor as regular drugs, but they are fake, and they like to see the dog in action. Week Number Seven is gonna be our Respect Project, that's located here in San Marcos. We want to use this program for the nine-to-12-year-olds as a launching point to provide a good foundation for a positive lifestyle, and then continue on that path, so that they can join our Respect program as they get older, and continue them on that positive lifestyle. Week Number Eight is gonna be our graduation at 255 Pico Avenue, and it's gonna be a joint graduation with both the city of San Marcos and the participants from the city of Vista. We're looking at probably about 150 people altogether between the guardians and the children that are participating, so it's gonna be a very big event. And again, Chick-fil-A's gonna sponsor that. As of right now, we have capped both of our registrations. We had registration maybe open for approximately 10 days, and we had the city, we had schools, we had everybody circulating our flyers, and obviously, it was very popular and it got filled up quickly. So in the city of Vista, we have 35 kids and 32 adults, and in the city of San Marcos, we have 41 kids and 35 parents in total. There is currently a waitlist that is open, just in case somebody does drop out, we can have that spot filled. And there's also an interest list in the next academy. Again, we're looking for two academies per year, one in the fall, one in the spring, and then also to go countywide after this is implemented. So the guardian attendance will be mandatory, and the other things that I wanted to cover that are not additionally on this slide, we are gonna have headsets for real-time Spanish translation provided by the migrant education. We're gonna have approximately 30 of those. If we do run into the need for more, I'm sure we can pull some resources and we'll find some people to donate some more, but as of right now, we have 30, which I think is a very good number. We also have Spanish translators that are gonna be provided for every week as well, so we can accommodate both English and Spanish speakers with no issues. We're gonna have, we just had certificates made for the graduates, and they came out super cool. So there's something that they're gonna be proud of at the very end of the eight weeks to receive, and that should be about it. Do we have any questions?
Well, I already asked the two that I had. Does anyone else have any questions? And by the way, this is really cool. This is really cool. And 41 people are going to be attending the first, the first one.
For San Marcos, yes, we have 41 kids and 35 parents. Unfortunately, we had to cap at that point, because providing food for everybody and just getting everybody in one area to teach and stuff like that, and get a little out of hand quickly, so we're starting with this, this is a very good number. I'm happy that we got here after just 10 days of registration, and then we'll see if we can expand and grow in the future.
And it's not all about, you know, academic content, it's about fun, too.
Absolutely.
So, I love that. Okay, Councilmember Musgrove.
Yes, thank you. Real quickly, issues with logistics of getting the kids from Vista into San Marcos, is that already addressed with the parents?
We have two split locations, so Vista's gonna have their own, and San Marcos is gonna have their own. We exited Vista out of our presentation, just because we are in the city of San Marcos, but they will be at Linda Roads. So they have their own facility, they have their own areas, everything is dedicated, big parking lot, so they're all set on their end.
Except for Week Eight, the graduation will be a joint graduation?
Correction, yeah, in the city of San Marcos, both of us, Vista and San Marcos.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Sennella.
Yeah, it's a fantastic program, and thank you for the presentation, and thank you for leading it. Probably over a decade ago, I had a chance to be involved with Star Pal down in San Diego, and so I'm pretty familiar with that organization, and this sounds very familiar to some of the things that they're doing. You mentioned it when you were talking, but I don't think we can stress enough how important it is to give our youth the opportunity to have positive interactions with law enforcement. So many, what we saw when I was involved with Star Pal is that, you know, the only time a lot of kids get to interact with law enforcement is when, you know, you're coming to take dad away, or there's something negative. And so to have this, this positive interaction with them and build that comfort level between the two groups, I think is just absolutely critical, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other guests? Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mary. Just a couple of follow-up questions. I think I missed, what's the breakdown of the class for Vista and for San Marcos, the number of participants?
For Vista, we have 35 kids, 32 adults, and for the city of San Marcos, we have 41 kids and 35 parents.
Okay. And what's your waitlist look like so far?
We actually just capped today, and we just closed the registration this morning, so we just opened the waitlist today. So we don't have a number in hand yet, but it will be out by the time that we start our first session.
Yeah, no, that's great that you're getting this response. So I'm wondering, what would we need in order to open up to more participants, since it sounds like there's a lot of, there's a lot of buzz and we have interest? So what would we need to do?
I think the biggest thing is the venue capacity, because right now, the venue that we have, especially for the graduation and the classroom, usually they cap at about 100 participants, so we cannot go over than that number, especially when we have the joint graduation, where both Vista and San Marcos already have 150 people, and that's pretty much how much 255 Pico Avenue can accommodate us. So one is gonna be the venue capacity, and the other one is because we want to bring, we want to sponsor dinner for every section, so that's gonna be a huge thing, where we need the collaborative partners to either support us with this, or more funding coming from other resources to cover that part of, yeah, the program.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, any other questions?
I guess just real quickly, I'll show the shirt while we're all here.
Oh, okay. I was wondering, I was looking around, looking for that.
So this'll be the front, we're just doing a very basic white t-shirt with the logo on the front and the back.
Nice. Is there something on the back?
Yep.
And we also provide like notebooks and then organizer, file organizers, like this would Rise Above logo for all of the students in the class.
Okay, and graduation is going to be what date again?
It's gonna be on Friday, November 8th.
November 8th, so before the holidays.
Yes, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, thanks a lot. I appreciate all that you guys are doing and how you keep all of our citizens safe, and then also work to educate the community, so that they understand that you're here to help. Okay, moving on to our consent calendar, we have a few items that are going to be polled, item five, six, eight, and then we're tabling number 12, and that's it. Seventeen, okay. All right. Poll, poll 17, only tabling item number 12. Do I have a motion for the balance?
Move to approve the balance.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. One minor, items on item eight.
I don't think your microphone's...
Oh, I turned it back off.
Oh, okay.
On item eight, really minor, in section 20.31...
On item eight, really minor, in section 20.310, .04, 050, in Luffy, section A, there's an extra "N" in Luffy, so I just want the council to approve the corrected version of that item, should item eight be approved.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, so with that, would it be Councilmember Musgrove? Would it be including the less "N" in "N"?
One less "N" to confuse with optional lodging.
It sounds funny to say that. Okay, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I get clarification? Are we voting?
We're polling items five, six, eight, and also seventeen, and we are tabling item number 12. So it'd be for the balance of the, unless there were any other items that you wanted to pull?
No, no, that was all, I was a little bit confused with the correction on item number eight that was presented.
Oh, item number eight, yeah, we're not to that. Mrs. Peak just wanted to bring that to our attention. Okay, so let's vote again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any no's? Okay. Item number five, Councilmember Nunez.
I pulled that item for the specific reason to indicate that I was absent for that item, and so was not here, was not able to get up to speed on that, so I wanted to make sure that that was recorded.
Okay, so.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, all second, okay. Motion in a second, all in favor? Aye?
All abstain.
Okay. All right, item number six, Councilmember Nunez. So you pulled that one as well, and we can go ahead and vote on that.
Correct, for the same reason.
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any no's? Abstain?
And abstain.
Okay. Item number eight, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any no's? And any abstentions?
And all abstain.
Okay. All right, moving on to, so we polled item number 12 as a table, so that we will have it a later date. So now we're to item number 17. Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Yes, I would just like staff to explain a little bit about the savings related to this item, and the discussion about outsourcing contracts, and then bringing some of the work back to in-house employees.
The best value analysis, I think is what we're calling that.
That is correct, Madam Mayor. Yes, the item relates to adding new full-time positions into the classification and compensation schedule. During our budget workshop and our budget investigation this year, we conducted several best value analyses. One of those analyses related to the building division. When we took a look at what the contract costs currently are versus what it would cost to provide the same or higher level of service with in-house staff, we determined that we would be saving $100,000 per year by bringing those positions back in-house with staff that are city employees. The analysis included not just the employee wages, but their comprehensive benefit package as well as, we have Gov Invest, which is a service that helps us with the analysis and can actually project out the pension costs over time. So the fully loaded employee rate was measured against the current contract rate, and we made the determination that we would bring those positions back into the city with a cost savings and a goal of improving service.
Thank you. I'll move to approve, item 17.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any no's? Okay, moving on to oral communications, we have a few speakers, we're going to take five. So that will be, actually, we have five speakers, so perfect. Maureen, Marlene Walder is up first, followed by John Mosher, and then Jeffrey Papendyak, Popindyak. I think I said that right. Okay.
We're only three minutes now?
Three minutes.
Okay.
Like everyone else in the county, except for the county and the City of San Diego, they only have one minute, so.
Okay, deleting because I'm sure Mr. Mosher's going to be doing a lot that I said. Okay, I'm Marlene Walder. I live at San Marcos Mobile Estates on Barham. Since before COVID, because you remarked about the emergency evacuation plan, we've never had one. And so it ended really with the fire that we did have in Santa Lejo by the college, and that where we had an official evacuation plan. And since then, we cannot get the park to cooperate, and they say it's up to all the residents, but it, we're a rental, and it's up to them to have a list of names and phone numbers of everyone in case of an emergency to be able to check off, and we've never been able to have a directory that's even up to date, and no one keeps the phone numbers up to date. It seems like our food bank has the most up-to-date thing, and that's done by three volunteers, major work is done by three volunteers. As far as the roads and the traffic, it normally took me seven minutes to get here, and now it takes 15. Today, getting out of our park was miserable, and some person, I didn't look if it was a man or woman because the sun was shining, and they actually stopped in the lane that they didn't have to stop in to let the cars turn into our park, and I snuck out while they were turning in. The roads on that street are not heavy-duty enough for the number of trucks that go down that street, and the more you fix the street, the worse the street seems to be getting. Like what they did to the new house for Myers, where they put an entrance and an exit on Barham. But the problem is, I had to go to Grace Church twice today, and, I mean, these cars are not going at 40 miles an hour. It says, slow down for senior park, the tree is blocking the sign, but it's 35 there, and I feel like I'm going to get run over every time I drive into my own park. Okay, I'm sure you've already heard about the problems with the electricity, and I'm hoping that's what he's going to talk about, but I'm getting telephone calls because there's no management. And now they're going to hire, or they want to hire, a young girl with two children and give her a place to stay in the park, and we're a senior park. What is that telling the residents who live there that break all the laws now? Okay.
Okay, Marlene, we will have emergency services reach out about the emergency service plan, and then I know that Mrs. Peak is working with our housing folks on a few things, so the two offices will be getting back to you. Okay, up next will be John Mosher, followed by Jeffrey Papendyak. Welcome, John.
Hello, Mayor, Councilmembers, Michelle, Helen, Phil, good to see you guys. I'm here for two reasons, so I fell out two speaker slips, so I'm not sure if I'll be allowed to talk again. Initially, what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about Lakeview, introduced just prior to when Jeff gets up here, and that's, he's at Lakeview State's Mobile Home Park, and their owners are working to change their rules and regs and write a clause in there where they could change from a senior park to an all-age park sometime in the future. So looking around what's happened across the state, Tim Sheehan, if he was here, he could tell you what happened at his park that got switched to an all-age a month after his parents bought in there. As a matter of fact, you probably will receive an email from him talking about that. We're looking at how to solve the problem before it happens and stop what's happening to them so it can't, and what we were introduced to is this mobile home, senior mobile home park overlay program as a simpler way to protect the senior mobile home parks from actually getting changed to all-age parks. One of our biggest problems there is, the minute it changes, it starts forcing the seniors out, it also takes away available housing for us for the future, and that's one of the big problems we've run into here, is affordable housing. And since these parks were created originally basically for the seniors as a retirement center, we're asking to please help us, protect us in the future, protect our homes. So I'll let Jeff talk a little more from his side, just in case. I sent you something from our park for San Marcos Mobile Estates about the problems, the current power problems we're having in the center of the park. The front of the park, up near where Marlene is, had the problems last year, and some years before that, repeated problems over the years. So I appreciate Michelle having Destiny give me a call. She called multiple people to get as much information as she can, and we're still working with her to supply information about that and the maintenance issues that we're trying to figure out how to actually get them to finally take care of. But you'll be seeing me as usual, and you'll be hearing more from me. On the Lakeview, when I sent you guys that packet today, an email, I actually dumped everything on you that I would have given you in phases, because I feel the seriousness of this problem, instead of trying to piecemeal it, give you the legal documents, give you the other background documents to read or have that you could actually work with, so we're more informed. So we would appreciate being on the agenda as soon as possible.
Thank you, John. We do have, obviously, you know, we have our ordinance that we are going to defend, and so I know Mrs. Peak is looking into the issues that have arisen regarding that, including the issue at Lakeview, as well as the issues over at San Marcos Mobile Estates. So just know that we're on it, and we take very seriously our ordinance, and we will definitely defend that, so.
We appreciate it. I mean, we do.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Jeffrey. I think I'm saying it wrong, but it's okay if you correct me.
Papendyak.
Papendyak.
Yeah, there's one, yeah, that's it.
Okay, my apologies. Jeffrey, just please.
It's not an easy one. I had to live with it my whole life. So I'm Jeff Papendyak. I live at 809 Discovery in the middle of the construction zone at Lakeview Mobile Estates, and about six weeks ago, the owner of our park, which is a senior park, he gave every one of us this, what he calls a rules and regulations, but it's 48 pages of very dense legalese, you know, that most of the members cannot understand. So it's not, its intention is not to give us rules and regulations that we can follow. I don't know what the intention is, but in there is that clause that John referred to, that they reserve the option to convert the park from all, from senior park to all ages, 55-plus. And I've talked to a number of you already about this, you know, and initially, we went back to them with San Marcos Municipal Code 16.04, but their attorney said that the mobile home residency laws supersede that, and it hasn't been tested in court. And the attorney, John's attorney, said that it would be very expensive to test that, and there was a good chance we could lose. And then that's when they brought up the senior mobile home park overlay district. Now, some of you have received emails from some of the residents who are complaining about this moving to all ages, simply because the way the rule is written, they don't have to provide anything for, if it's, if it converted to all ages. For example, we don't have a playground, we don't have amenities for children, we have, we don't have extra parking if there's going to be families, we don't even have sidewalks, and the pool has direct access to the, from the clubhouse with no locks on the doors. So that would be dangerous, and it's going to result in increased traffic, crime, and noise, and the residents are very concerned about this. So John was talking about mobile home, senior mobile home park overlay district, and that has gone to the Ninth Circuit Court and been upheld. So Oceanside, Huntington Beach, Ventura, Thousand Oaks, Santa Barbara, and Ukaypa have all adopted these, and they are now the laws in those cities. And that overlay protection district protects all the senior mobile parks within that district. So that's what we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Next up is Sean Lodgston, followed by Noah Stangby.
I usually walk with either a crutch or a cane, and I forgot it today, but, my name's Sean Lodgston, and I'm, go to San Marcos Lutheran Church, and I worked with, I've been working with the homeless in San Marcos for, since 2020. And the initiative that you guys have been voting on, on banning them and being able to impound the vehicles and arrest them in the parks, is going to be a problem, and I'm trying to stop confusion before it happens. The homeless community in San Marcos is a lot bigger than you guys think it is. The, what you put down there, that there was two people last year and 30 people this year, and my question is, on what street? The numbers are in the hundreds, if not thousands. They, people get their vehicles impounded, and they get arrested for different things, and then in turn, they have to go out and they start stealing stuff. They get to a point that any time an officer or somebody of the law shows up, they're scared, they're hiding, and you guys don't find them, because there's such this animosity between them. They're not even treated like humans anymore. They're treated like vermin and like dogs. And the people that even try to help out, like this gentleman over here, I've been working with him and getting him back as a friendly part of society, and he was pressure washing around his area, and so he was accused of dumping gray water and black water because of it. And so they gave him a fine of $35,000. And this is ridiculous. We're trying to help the people, and we're, instead, we are treating them like they're animals. Now, we have a solution for trying to rectify this situation, but it's going to take time, which I don't have today. But I hope you guys will reconsider the vote that you guys were passing on the major to take out the homeless.
Thank you, Sean. If you could leave your contact information, we'll have someone reach out to you, but that's, I, we already passed the ordinance. That's not on the agenda for this evening, so.
Okay, well, I was under the impression that there was still time on that for the second vote.
No, it's already passed, and it's in effect.
Okay, and there's no going back on it?
So if you could just leave your information, we'll have city staff to reach out to you. Thank you, and thank you for your work. Next up is Noah Stangby.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Noah Stangby. My wife, Marion, and I are youth leaders at Grace San Marcos Church. We work with school-aged students, 12 to 17 years old, and we have learned about some things that are happening in our schools that are very alarming to us. We have students that are in Mission Hills High, students at Woodland Park Middle School, and Nob Hill Elementary. And specifically at Woodland Park Middle School, there is a case of a young man that has been allowed to use the ladies restroom and the ladies locker room for physical education classes for, this is the third year now. I'm here tonight because this is something that, not only did I not grow up with it, I cannot even imagine what these young ladies have to go through every day to second-guess who's in the bathroom when I walk in there. I think that this is a, I don't think, I know that this is a slippery slope that we're on, not only as a city, not only as a country, but as a civilization, when we begin stepping outside of spiritual and natural law, and allowing people to violate things that should not be violated. I come in the name of the love for all youth. My wife and I have given our lives. My wife and I have given our lives to these, to these kids, and we will continue doing so, and that's the reason why I'm here tonight. I know, I understand that this is not on the agenda, and this is not open for comment, but we are aware in the city of Huntington Beach, California, where there were ordinances passed by the city council overruling several state laws that were passed and essentially changing the circumstances and reverting them back to where they should be in that city. We're going to be seeking to do the same thing. And I come here tonight to, for whoever doesn't know about this, whoever was ignorant to this fact, it's happening in our schools, it's happening to our daughters, to our sons, people are being confused, people are being corrupted, and we are going, we plan to stand against that and to restore justice and a sense of order to our society and to our schools. The next generation is all we have, and if we allow them to travel this path, it's going, it's not going to look good for this nation. So with respect and honor tonight, thank you for listening to me, and I will, you'll be hearing from me.
Thank you, Noah. I did want to make one suggestion. You may go to the school district because we don't have any jurisdiction over what happens on school property.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Up next is, are the public hearings, item number 18, ordinance 2024-1551, an ordinance of the city council repealing and replacing Chapter 20.410 of the San Marcos Municipal Code regarding accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and accessory structures, and finding that said repeal and replacement is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act, which is SEQA. And this is to bring us into compliance with state law, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and council members.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Paterno from the city attorney's office will be providing the presentation on this item tonight. Also up on the dais is Sarah Cluff. She's one of our planners who's assisted in the ADU updates.
Good evening. I'll be presenting this ordinance on accessory dwelling units, which will update code chapter Accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, are an attached or detached residential dwelling unit that provides complete independent living facilities for one or more persons. This is governed by state law and by our municipal code. It is a part of the pro-housing state kind of policy that we've been seeing in the past couple of years, this grouping of legislation. ADU regulations were first implemented in the municipal code in 2020, and this ordinance will update chapter 20.410 to comply with state legislation that was enacted after 2020, and also staff recommendations based on experience so far with the chapter. The new legislation that we've seen is AB 345. This allows the sale of ADUs separate from the primary dwelling and under a very limited application when the ADU was built by a qualifying nonprofit corporation. SB 897 and AB 2221, these made substantive changes to the building requirements and permitting process, and so I've just notated that later in the presentation where these bills apply to avoid too much repetition. AB 976 prohibits owner occupancy requirements on ADUs but not junior ADUs. And junior ADUs are just a smaller version of an ADU, which has, may or may not have its own bathroom, just to clarify that. AB 1033, this would allow separate conveyance of the ADU and the primary dwelling. If a city so chooses to adopt that policy, we would have to proactively adopt an ordinance that is not before us, and we will not be adopting such an ordinance, and separate conveyances of ADUs will not be permitted in San Marcos. So on to the code section changes for section 020. First, it now states that in the event of inconsistencies between state law and our code, that state law would prevail. It was important for us to put this language in because there is so much activity with ADU legislation and a high possibility that there may be outdated language just by virtue of the state passing new bills. So we wanted to just put that coverage in there. It also updates the description of junior ADUs to include all enclosed uses within the residence, including attached garages. And it requires that junior ADU sharing a bathroom with the primary dwelling must include both interior and exterior entrances. Section 020 also clarifies the number of ADUs and junior ADUs allowed. The approach taken was to just direct to state law rather than outline the specific number and type of units that are permitted. The language reads that we would allow the minimum required by the state. There was an option to take, to allow more ADUs, but this ordinance does limit to the minimum required, that the state requires a city to allow. We did take this approach because of the, the activity with the legislation and the, also the interpretation from HCD. There is a lot of interpretation based on the, the way that the state law is written, and there is a lot of disharmony in, in terms of what people believe, or cities and legislators or agencies tend to believe is, is the exact amount. So our interpretation, and based on discussions with HCD currently, is that, although this is not in our code, but just for your information, this is what would be permitted. On a single-family dwelling parcel, one junior ADU, which would, of course, always be within the existing space, one attached ADU, and this can be a new ADU or a conversion of an existing space. A conversion is normally an accessory structure, so a detached garage or shed or some other sort of structure that's on the parcel already. So that would be, it would be an attached ADU but in a detached structure, which can be a little tricky sometimes. And then also one detached new construction ADU. On multifamily dwelling parcels, two detached ADUs are permitted. And in terms of attached ADUs, there can be 25% of the dwelling units. So if there was a multifamily building with 100 units, an additional 25 attached ADUs would be permitted.
Okay, I have a question. I don't know if anyone else is confused, but I do have a question. On the single-family dwelling parcels, okay, so when you say one junior ADU within existing space, so when you're saying within existing space and then also one attached ADU, newer conversion of an existing space, but that it's not actually part of the home, so like a detached garage?
It may or may not be a part of the attached home.
So I'm going to give you a scenario, and if you could maybe help, help me out on this. Okay, so you have a house, it has a one-car garage and a one-car garage. One-car garage is attached to the house, well, they're actually both technically attached, but one has access to the house, the other one does not have access to the house. Are those two different spaces, or are those, like, could they be, would one qualify for a junior ADU and one for an attached ADU because technically one is attached but you don't get access to the house, or I'm not sure how that works?
You can have any permutation of these types of ADUs that can exist, which becomes a word problem and becomes kind of a mind game sometimes, but under the scenario that you provided, you would be able to do one JADU, and you would be able to put another ADU.
That's what I was thinking based on what you had said. So, you know, this is just us adopting state law. I guess my concern would be when you have neighborhoods that have maybe one-side parking, one-side street parking because of the fire lane, because of the width of the roads and that sort of thing, like, we can't even get involved in all of that, correct? Like, that is not anything that comes into play.
There are some parking requirements. We, we do, this ordinance doesn't change the parking requirements. There is one space required per ADU, not for JADUs, but there are a lot of exceptions where parking is not required. There are health and safety limits, but generally, parking is not a major consideration.
I guess my concern in the state, you hear me this say, well, you might have not have ever heard me say that, but in their infinite wisdom, they literally are taking over our land use locally, and no longer. I mean, this is a philosophy, of course, that I just don't agree with. I mean, if you buy in a single-family residential neighborhood, there is an expectation that there will be parking in the garage and then also parking in the driveway, but that's not what the state, again, in their infinite wisdom, is really shooting for. It's to pack in people to spaces that aren't necessarily meant to have folks living in them, all to help with the housing crisis, but it doesn't actually help with our, our affordable housing numbers, which kind of is, is a bit of an issue for me. But anyway, I guess you can go on. I just, I wanted to bring attention to it because a lot of people ask me, why, why are my neighbors converting their homes into so many units, and it's too many people in one house, and now there's not enough street parking? And then I try to explain it to them, but they look at me like, maybe I don't know what I'm talking about. I just feel like it's very frustrating for folks in the community, and I just really wish the state would stay out of our, out of our land use, but carry on, I suppose.
We, thank you. And one comment I would make is that we have taken the absolute minimum required by the state, where other cities have been more, you know, allowed a lot, much more units on each parcel. On to section 030, it's been updated to require the city to consider a demolition permit for a detached garage that is to be replaced with an ADU at the same time as the building permit for the ADU. And new language prevents the city from requiring the correction of non-conforming zoning conditions, building code violations, or unpermitted structures as a condition of an ADU permit In section 050, we did replace some subjective evaluation standards with objective standards. HCD did review this ordinance, and this was a comment we received from them, which is that we could not use phrases such as "in harmony with" or "match the character of", it had to be something that was entirely objective. So we just simply removed those phrases and, or replaced them with objective language. 060 also updates the ADU height limits. It's 16 feet for a detached ADU, 18 feet for a detached ADU within certain, within proximity of certain transit corridors, 18 feet for ADUs on a lot with an existing or proposed multi-story dwelling on a multifamily lot, and 25 feet for an attached ADU or the height limit of the primary dwelling unit, whichever is lower, and ADUs may never exceed two stories. 060 also clarifies size limits, and this applies to attached and detached ADUs. For one bedroom, you can simply look at the 850-square-foot figure. The state requires us to allow at least 850 square feet, and we cap it at that number. So pretty much that will be the figure. There's also language allowing 50% of the living area of the proposed or existing primary dwelling, but that likely only applies to cities who are allowing units that are larger than 850 square feet. A two-bedroom ADU may be 1,000 square feet, and also if the lot is one acre or larger, a one-bedroom ADU may also be up to 1,000 square feet. There is another mandatory, commonly called a mandatory ADU, which is an ADU subject to code section 66323, which operates under different rules and may result in a size maximum of 800 square feet, which I'll describe in detail on this slide. So the mandatory ADU interacts with the state law in differently than the rest of the, the regulations. It essentially means that should all of the factors on this slide be present, we cannot deny the ADU. So if the only ADU that would be feasible on the parcel meets these specifications, we cannot impose location setback or parking requirements. So we normally would require one parking spot, we would require front setbacks, and we would also require it to be in the back 50% of the lot. But if there are four-foot side-in-re setbacks, it is, there's space for an 800-square-foot unit, there's a 16-foot height limit, the location of the ADU will allow access to adequate water and sewer services, and the ADU is a detached new construction unit, then it will, it will come into fruition. There's no way to deny such an application. And exactly how this language interacts with the rest of the state law is very fluid. There's some strict interpretations of this. Our interpretation is what we believe is the same as how HCD has interpreted it and the guidance that they've provided on their website and what they've indicated to us based on, you know, our interactions with them. So this is the, the interpretation that we take now, and of course, if we receive other guidance in the future, we'll adjust our policy and understanding.
A quick clarification, Jacqueline, on, or maybe Joe might need to answer this. On a vacant piece of property, a home, someone comes in, they want to, they want to build a home on that property, they need to pay sewer fees and then water fees to connect a, same, same exact scenario, though there is already a house located that, at that area, but they're going to add an ADU, they do not have to pay sewer or water fees to connect, correct? Well, I guess it would be capacity fees. Generally, what ends up happening is if someone's building, new development pays for these things, but an ADU does not have to pay for these, correct? And also no school capacity fees as well?
That's correct. I mean, there are PFF fees that they need to contribute unless they're under than 750 square-foot ADU, then they're exempt from that as well.
So if there are two-bedroom, 1,000 square feet, they do not pay any school capacity fee, no sewer connection or sewer capacity and no water capacity fees, correct? I think, I think the answer is no, but I'm just verifying.
Yes, I believe you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
As we go on, I'll, I'll confirm that, though.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, on to, or still continuing on section 060. It's also updated to allow the sale of ADUs separate from the primary dwelling unit under that limited circumstance involving nonprofit corporations. It also removes owner occupancy requirements for ADUs but not junior ADUs, and it also removes siting limits, such that an ADU permit may not be denied because the ADU impacts the parking of adjacent properties. Another update is that when a permit for an ADU is submitted at the same time as a permit for a single-family dwelling or multifamily dwelling, no additional parking may be required because of the ADU. So as I said, there are quite a few exceptions to that requirement of when one parking space will be required. It also states that construction of an ADU will not trigger a requirement to install fire sprinkler systems in the existing primary dwelling unit. It removes deed restrictions for ADUs but not junior ADUs, and also clarifies rental units, so both may be rented. units, so both may be rented, but not for less than 31 days. Some general changes that were made, just non-substantive changes. We made quite a bit additions to the code section, so we also made some organizational changes. There were some sections that referred to attached ADUs and junior ADUs, separate from the categories themselves, and it just was repetitive and confusing, so we just removed those to promote organization. And similar, similar little organizational non-substantive changes were made throughout the chapter. We added some definitions, high-quality transit corridor and major transit stop. These are relevant in terms of the height of the ADU and mentioned specifically in the code, so, you know, a definition was necessary for both terms. The term neighborhood was removed. That term only appeared in subjective phrases, so there was no need for the definition, as we removed all of the subjective language. In terms of SEQA, the proposed text amendments are exempt from SEQA because this is not a project within the meaning of the SEQA guidelines, and even if this ordinance is found to be subject to SEQA, it is exempt under section 15061B3 because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility of a significant impact on the environment. In terms of public comment, after, or immediately before the planning commission hearing or meeting, of course, the ordinance was posted online. We did receive feedback from a, an organization called the Housing Defense Fund. We received a letter from them, just responding to our ordinance and providing feedback. We did provide a response for internally for the city, but we did not feel that a response was necessary for, to actually respond to the organization itself. This is a nonprofit advocacy housing group. It's not a, you know, it's not a government agency. And we felt that their comments took a very strict interpretation of the law that was not aligned with our understanding, nor the materials that are provided on the HCD website or the, our discussions with HCD as well. So, no changes were made to the ordinance based off of that letter. However, I will say we did make one stylistic change, that there was a comment about a subjective phrase, which we had intended to remove anyway, so because of that comment, we were able to catch it and quickly remove it, so it was a well-taken comment. But in terms of the substantive, I guess, issues that they took with our ordinance, we did, we did not agree and did not think there was any need for changes. A public hearing was, planning commission public hearing was conducted on August 5th. No further public comments were received and recommended approval by a 7-0 vote. The recommendation is adoption of the categorical exemption and approval of ordinance number 2024-1551 for repeal and replacement of chapter 20.410 of the San Marcos Municipal Code.
All right, any questions of the council? Yes, Councilmember Musgrove.
If you could go back a few slides, the rental requirement for no less than 31 days seems to go towards the short-term vacation rental issue. It does talk about no less than 31 days, but it doesn't specify contiguous days, days in a month, days in a year, a single renter. So, potentially, I could rent this out on a continuous basis as a short-term vacation rental, so I don't, I don't, I'd like a little more clarification than that ordinance, the wording of it. So, if it's, if it applies to a single renter for 31 days, or is it one month, in the event we have a month that has 28 days or 30 days?
The...
So, I guess, what is the intent?
The intent is, of course, to be a contiguous 31 days, to avoid any short-term rentals. That's the, that's the intent, and that's also the, the context of that wording. So, any other interpretation, I think, would be unreasonable.
It does leave the door open, because it simply says 31 days. Then it could be contiguous, but it could be multiple renters, if one leaves one day and the next one comes in. I guess my point is if we're leaving too many loose ends, where we have the opportunity now to tighten them up, I think we should.
Okay, we'll, we'll take that point into consideration.
As opposed to dealing with it later, can I ask what, what the suggested insertion is? Is it consecutive? Councilmember Musgrove, would that address your concern?
Well, they could be consecutive days, but there are time issues, and there are identifying renters. There are some, not necessarily in San Marcos, but along the coast, where you have continuous renters on short-term vacation rentals. So, they are contiguous days, and it's less than 31, because there's always somebody in there, so you effectively...
Then it's not a short-term rental.
But this doesn't say that. It simply says no less than 31 days.
We don't regulate short-term rentals here in the city, so...
Right, so, again, so then my question is, what is the point of that, if we're not going to specify exactly what it means?
The only clarification I think we can offer at this time is to insert the word consecutive, so that it's clear that it's not less than 31 consecutive days. If you want to get into the whole short-term rental issue, I think that's a little bit beyond the scope of dealing with the ordinance this evening. So, we might bring forward language in the future to address that concern. But frankly, I've never seen an issue where we've got renters going essentially higgly, pickly, you know, a few days here, a few days there, or successive 31-day periods. We could say consecutive, 31 consecutive days and/or successive periods. I just want to know how to address it now to address your concern, so that we can get this modified version that's more consistent with state law on the books as readily as possible.
So, is, is that 31 days, is that consistent with HCD recommendation, or is that something we came up with?
That's HCD, and that's actually the California Legislature, yeah.
It's in the legislation. So, is that verbatim from the legislature?
Pretty much.
Infinite wisdom. I'll say it again. Would adding...
Only the legislature put a little bit more time into thinking about the requirements to impose on local agencies, but they didn't, so...
Well, the vagaries in their legislation, or we find so confounding as time goes on.
Yeah, I think the legis, state legislation reads, "Local agency shall require that a rental of an accessory dwelling unit created pursuant to this section be for a term longer than 30 days."
Well, would it make you feel better, Councilmember Musgrove, if we added consecutive before days?
Well, I'm not considering my feelings on this. I would just like the clarification. So, maybe if we change it to the wording that the state has, then we can certainly use that as an argument if we have an issue down the road.
Yeah, and to clarify, the ordinance reads, "The ADU may be rented, but not less than 31 days." So, if, if there's a preference to add some clarifying language...
I think what he just expressed is that he'd prefer the state language, which is not less than 30 days.
I think if we mirror their wording, then any adjustments we might need to make, we can certainly argue that we have complied with HCD's wording, and now this is a scenario we have.
So...
That would help us interpret it in accordance with what HCD guidelines and FAQs might suggest, so that might offer at least some clarification.
Yep, exactly, thank you.
So, back to the state law.
I have a question.
Yes, Council, our deputy mayor.
So, on page three, you talked about multifamily dwelling parcels. Are you talking about those as pieces of land, or as units, as a multifamily unit?
Well, it can be either, because an ADU is relevant to an existing building or proposed building.
Okay, so, let's just use an example, a possible scenario. Would this apply to apartments also?
Yes.
So, if an apartment owner has a garage for each of their apartments, and they want to convert that garage into a living unit, ADU, whatever it would be, are they allowed to do that under this law? And basically, the residents that live there in those particular units would not have any parking possibly? Is that allowed?
There are, it's allowed under the current language.
Yeah. It's current?
Yes, that's why it's being revised.
Okay, and so, under this new language, it's also allowed?
Up to 25%.
Okay. Just want to clarify that. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other, yes, Councilmember Sannella?
I'll keep it short. I'm not necessarily against ADUs, and I know that our, our hands are tied here. And I had some comments about it, but it sounds like the Sacramento politicians took our voice away. We can talk about it until all night long. It doesn't mean anything, so I'll just go ahead and move on.
Okay, well, it's a public hearing, so we propose, and we close a public hearing?
Our hands are tied, so we can sit here and...
Yeah, we can keep talking about it all night.
Sacramento politicians have taken our voice away.
Yes, I don't believe we have any speakers on this item. No, no speakers. Is that a, is that a motion to close a public hearing? Yeah, Councilmember Maria?
Yeah, no, thank you. I have, I have one question, and now I think I'm a little bit confused, but if we go back to slide number four on AB 1033 2024, I'm not sure what, what, why this is here, and what it, and what it says, and what it does to what we're approving today. The slide says that AB 1033 24 allows separate conveyance of the ADU in primary dwelling if a city chooses to adopt such an ordinance, and we're not being asked to adopt such an ordinance. So, I'm not sure, are we waiting on that because we already have something in place, and we don't need to...
This is just for your information about a piece of legislation that was passed. A city may choose to include this regulation within a new ordinance they pass. This could have been included in this ordinance, but the city has chosen not to include this regulation in this ordinance.
Okay, and so, it's not clear to me why we're not including it, or why we should, or we shouldn't, or is it something that we're going to be touching on at a later point? I'm just not sure what it means for us today.
What, I think our attempt was, since the original changes to the ADU ordinance in 2020, we were just trying to provide counsel with a comprehensive report back on ADU legislation that's taken place since then. So, this is state legis, state legislation that allows the separate conveyance. This would need to be adopted by a separate ordinance, so that would be based on policy direction from city council to move forward in that direction if they so choose so.
So, what does that mean, then, today, and maybe this is for Helen, so, does this mean that if somebody wanted to proceed to convey, we would be looking at state law instead of our ordinance, or...
No, the state law basically provides that a jurisdiction can do so if it chooses. It does not mandate it. Staff recommendation was not to include it at this time, subject to, you know, obviously...
Policy direction from the council.
It's policy direction. When, it's a misnomer to say that the city will not adopt such an ordinance. What we, what we intended is that staff is not making a recommendation to do so at this time. There are a number of interesting issues that can arise from people who may or may not share common walls and what have you, and those implications are really too, too interesting and too in-depth to deal with in this basic ADU update. So, if, in fact, the council were to direct us to come back with something, we would take a look at what's out there, and we would take a look at what the possible implications might be of separately conveying an ADU and a primary dwelling to which that ADU may or may not be attached, and all of the sort of intricate issues that might arise from that, and then come back with a fully-blown ordinance if that was the council's choosing. That is not our recommendation. We do not recommend that the city undertake to permit that kind of separate conveyance at this time, so it was brought forward as an information item only, and it is not part of the packet that is before you this evening, except as an informational item.
And you, you point to the, specifically to the language that's in our presentation, San Marcos will not adopt, so that's not contained in...
That is not, that is not provided for in the ADU ordinance that is before you this evening. If the council were to, had a desire to consider and to look at that issue, the council could provide direction to staff to come back, but, but that...
It's beyond the scope of what we're voting on today.
Essentially, the mechanism for incorporating AB 1033 is not part of the packet that's before you this evening. It's simply referenced for your information.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That was not clear to me, and I want to make sure that our residents, landowners, are not confused by that inclusion.
No, I apologize, it's not very clear in the, in the slide.
Thank you.
Okay, any other further discussion? Seeing none, I, oh, actually, no, we have one speaker slip, sorry. Marlene is, oh, sorry, Marlene. They handed it to me, and I was so engrossed in the conversation, I almost forgot.
Okay, it's a question on this ADU for multiple families. I don't understand. I'll use Williamsburg, which is a housing project that's been around a while. Their backyards may or may not be big enough, but their garages are. They're single families. The new homes on Myers are also single families, and both of them require you to keep your cars in your garages because they have no street parking. And I'm not sure if you're telling me that they're going to be able to do half of their garage, or maybe the whole garage, into an ADU because it has access to the house as well as to the street, and put an ADU in, and 25% of the houses get to have that ability? And if they do, where are they going to park?
I mean, we're already... It's not 25%, it's 100% actually.
Yeah, you're mixing the multifamily, Marlene, with the, with the single-family requirements. Single-family, and 100% of single-family residential units are able to have ADUs, up to three.
But what about the, what about the ones that have, it said, attached houses? The ones on Myers are all attached. No, there's fourplexes, fourplexes, and they all have two-car garages with you having to have to park in your garages. And Williamsburg also has, they have a couple street parkings, but there's never anything when I go there to park when I'm visiting someone, because they have to park in their garages also, and some do have aprons, but most of them don't. And I'm not understanding this, because right now, you come down Lamore, and today I came out on Lamore, and I had to go down this, turn left into our back gate, and I, no car could go around me on the right, because every single space was occupied. I don't know who's occupying them, and I felt like the cars behind me were going to run me over or go around me when a car was coming down the hill. I don't understand this. I know I would like to put an ADU, you know, what's saying that I can't do it in the mobile home? I was told that one of the mobile home parks is putting a duplex on their mobile home space.
Well, there's our frustration, Marlene. I think you've probably... Well, there's our frustration, Marlene. I think you've probably captured it right there. Okay, any further discussion? This is a public hearing.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add is, to Marlene's point, is, just because I can't bite my tongue. You'd said that we're telling you, we're just the messenger. This is coming from your friends in Sacramento.
I think I literally said it, and then you were like, well, we could argue about that, or we could talk about this all night. Yeah, this is exactly what I was talking about, the lack of parking, yes.
Eventually-
State of California legislature.
Eventually what will happen is enough residents will get, throughout California, will get fed up.
Vote differently.
They'll be negatively impacted, and then they'll, they'll voice their opinions in Sacramento.
Yeah.
So the requirement, Marlene, to park in the garage is probably an HOA issue? So that may get to the point now within who holds Trump on this, especially if it's a gated community and it's a private road. I mean, what is the governing authority on that? So that's rhetorical, but something else to consider.
Well, and I actually had brought that up a while back. I don't know if we ever made a determination about that, of which actually would be the overruling. Would it be the state allowing this craziness, I'll go ahead and say it, or is it the HOA that has authority over their local roads?
When these type of situations arise, normally what we would do is reach out to HCD and receive guidance on how, what is their interpretation of, of state law against this particular scenario?
Because, back to council member Musgroves, and, you know, yes, we're talking about this more, but I think the public does need to understand this. When you have fire lanes, how is a fire truck going to be able to safely come in when there's not enough room because people are parked in the fire lanes because there's not enough parking? This goes back to a lot of the discussion that we've had, you know, back to the state taking away our local authority, deciding what our cities look like. And council member Sanel is correct, that people need to pay attention when our hands are being tied by state laws. And it's very frustrating. And I will admit that I feel a little bitter about it because I don't want Sacramento deciding what happens here. But we are dealing with that, so we are bringing our, our information here in the city of how you build, how you can build up to, so that it complies with state law. And that's merely what our, our discussion is this evening, which is what I brought up. And I think that might have been my first comment before we actually even heard from staff. So anyway, yes, it's, it's all very ironic.
Sometimes the legislation is actually specific about the impact on private covenants. SB nine, for example. Tony Atkins' bill did indicate that the lot split was not, was not intended to affect private covenants such as HOAs and a preclusion for lot splitting. But most of these ADU pieces of legislation, they are not clear, which means that at some point, they will likely have to be litigated.
Okay, well, very frustrating. I think I see a speaker slip coming, so I will hold off for one second. Closing.
See if it's on topic.
It is, I'm sure, yeah. Okay, John Mosher.
Hello again. I've got a question, back towards the beginning of your slides. If I remember the pathway to all these being, say, forced on us, like in San Diego where you had mass transit or rabid transit close by, they were allowing less parking. And I remember on one of your beginning slides, you mentioned something about within so many feet or of like a bus route within like fifteen minutes or fifteen-minute cycle. Is that what's going on here? Is they're trying to get it so they've got, say, access to more public transportation? So you have less cars on the road like they're doing in San Diego? And they're compacting how many places they can fit people into?
Well, I can't speak exactly to the, the policy, you know, intention, but my understanding, our understanding is that around areas of public transportation, that's where there's the prioritization of putting housing.
Right.
And so they, there's a, there's a, there's less, we're noticing in the legislation, there's less restrictions that we can impose, or just in general, to, there's, it's easier to put in housing in areas where there's already public transportation.
Right, okay.
It doesn't require people to use that public transportation, or have no, like, some of, some of the parking, I think, is like half of a space or something like that per unit.
Yeah.
I've never seen half of a car, but-
Well, it's true, is that one slide in, one of your slides in the beginning referenced that.
Yes, hi, I think it's called, yeah, high, rich, transit-rich development, I don't know, something like that.
I think what, I think what the proximity to the transit allows you to do is have more height in terms of your ADU, in this case.
But as far as ADUs, John, this isn't about putting them there, you know, transportation options. You could do it in Twin Oaks Valley, you could do it up in San Leo Hills. There's no transportation out in those two areas.
Right.
And there's nothing that's stopping or slowing down ADUs in those areas. And so it just, the, the rules and regulations are looser around places where there's transportation options.
So that, that cites, John-
You can still do it, yeah.
Was it within a half mile? The city of San Diego wants to extend that out to a mile to encourage more ADUs. That's what they were doing, if they were local, which you can do.
That's what-
You can make it more generous, I suppose? You can't make it more-
Less restrictive.
But you can make it more, and that's what their intent was. But we're going to abide by what the HCD rule is.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Justin Gans.
Just a quick question. On one of the earlier slides, it was mentioned that there was a comment letter from the Housing Defense, California Housing Defense Fund. Is that public, or can I find that somewhere, or could it be read into the record?
It's actually, and it was in the agenda item. It is-
I couldn't find it.
Let's see, Attachment A in the agenda. If you, you can pull that up on your phone. It's Attachment A, Public Comment and City Response. Oh, Mrs. Pete has a paper copy.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other discussion?
I, I just, I just have a couple of quick comments before we close the public hearing. I just want to say that I support the ADUs. I think we need them. And I do think, I like that our residents are taking advantage of this option. So one of the things that, not necessarily now, but at some point, I'd like to see where they are being built in our city. I think that would be very useful for all of us to see, if we can map that somehow. And the other comment request that I would have from city staff is to make sure, it is very confusing. It's confusing for me. I think it's confusing for all of us to follow state law and really what's allowed and what are the possibilities. So I would request that we do some workshops, some education for our residents, so we can try to keep up to date on what's happening with the changes. But I do welcome these additions to, to the city.
Okay. Thanks for your comments.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to close a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any notes? Okay, seeing none. Do I have any further discussion? If not, can we get a motion to, a motion on the table?
And then-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would assume that that might include council members Musgrove to modify, request to modify 20.410.060H, I believe, to reference the HCD language, or the legislation language on, for no more than thirty days, or whatever the phrase is from, from the legislation.
Well, when we get, yeah, when we get a motion, is that-
I'll make the motion to adopt what the edits is stated by the city attorney.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any notes? Okay, seeing done. Motion passes. Moving on to oral communications. Oh, we have a few. Thank you very much. Okay, um, all right. So we have several speakers. So, um, where am I? I do have a statement, actually, a quick statement. "The San Marcos City Council is a legislative body that conducts business in these chambers for all San Marcos residents, representing them in matters that are within our control and are within our jurisdiction. We have a legislative platform that all four council members, including myself, have approved unanimously every year that we have been elected to office. It states in part, legislative priorities may only address issues directly relevant to or impacting the provision of municipal services. Generally, the city will not address matters that are not pertinent to the city's local government services, such as social or international issues. This has been a longstanding and very successful policy dating back to the eighties in San Marcos, staying in our lane, as I put it. We will not be entertaining any agenda items that do not fall within the legislative platform as adopted by the city council. Bullying and harassing behavior will not intimidate the city council to change our minds. All of our residents will be treated with respect and dignity. They will have the opportunity to have their voices heard, and will be able to count on us to treat everyone fairly. Our residents know that this city council will not waver. We will not be pressured to allow any residents that raise their voices or use personal attacks to change our minds and allow items on our agenda that do not fall under our authority. We will continue to represent everyone fairly and will not put any one group above another. We will continue to represent all residents of San Marcos, putting their safety, quality of life, and welfare as our highest priorities as we stay in our lane." Okay, moving on to the next oral communications. We have Alan Geraci, followed by Flower Alvarez Lopez, and then Adon Abiquin Brown. And those will be the first three. Welcome, Alan.
Thank you, mayor, council, staff. I just want to have a quick announcement, just to tell everybody that tomorrow, the County of San Diego's Board of Supervisors will discuss and vote on the adoption of the county's climate action plan. It's been a long time coming. I know I've personally worked on it for the last two years. And I urge everyone in the county to support the adoption of the climate action plan with the fire-safe and VMT-efficient alternative that has been fully described in the Environmental Impact Report. This plan will help to restrict development in the high and very high wildfire zones, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, lower air pollution, decrease traffic, and preserve wildlands and endangered species. In my opinion, this is the best plan for our health, our public safety, our families, and our community. Anyone who's interested in submitting a public comment can still do so on the county's website, sandiegocounty.gov. This matter is Item Six on tomorrow's agenda on September 11th. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Next up is Flower Alvarez Lopez, followed by Adon Abiquin Brown, followed by Ahmad Omer.
Hi. Hello, good evening, city council. For the record, my name is Flower Alvarez Lopez, lifelong San Marcos resident. I'm also the co-director of Universidad Popular here in San Marcos. First, I want to start off by thanking council member Maria for today's Smile Award. It was really great to see Richard get his flowers. He is a pillar of this community. I wanted to speak about a few different issues, mainly some of them from the beginning of the meeting. Want to highlight the National Preparedness Month section that was spoken about. Our organization has a very long history of working and reaching hard-to-reach community members and supporting with disaster preparedness and emergency response efforts. So I wanted to share that with the council today. We recently had a cohort go through the CERT with San Marcos Fire, and we're getting ready to send another cohort through with CERT. Our disaster preparedness and emergency response efforts are very important to our community. And the only other thing I want to highlight about that is language accessibility. So as the city is vamping up some of the disaster preparedness efforts, hopefully they'll be available in different languages. The, I want to end my public comment, just making some mentions about the rise above. I really want to urge the city to make sure that whatever happens for future cohorts, that they be evidence-based. I'm really interested in knowing how the evaluation process will happen for this program. And in that evaluation process, were demographics like race be included to share with, with the city? I really hope that the officers that are going to be engaging with our youth in this community will be trauma-informed, trained, or be willing to go through some trauma-informed training. I want to remind the city council and the deputies that are in the, the space today that I grew up in San Marcos, and I firsthand experienced and saw the harassment that came from law enforcement to brown youth in our community. So I really want to hope that part of this effort is to improve the relationship with communities of color in San Marcos and the sheriff's deputies of San Marcos. And I will end my public comment there. Thank you very much.
Flower. Next up is Adon, followed by Ahmad Omer, followed by Emily Mahmoud.
Hi, my name is Adon Abakin Brown. You already know why I'm here. I've been here every meeting in the past few months over the summer. You already know that I'm here to keep pushing for a unilateral ban-permanent ceasefire resolution. I really am confused by how you claim that it's not, that this is not, that international issues are not your concern when many other California cities have passed ceasefire resolutions. Pasadena, Santa Ana, La Puente, La Puente, Long Beach. And with each one, they've caused a ripple effect, pushing other cities to make that decision, and San Marcos could add to that ripple effect. You guys could be our voice. If you claim to represent us, then be our voice. Because regardless, people are being killed, Palestinians are being killed continuously, every day, every hour. The official number is forty thousand, but the law and the most prestigious medical journal in the world puts a number at over a hundred and eighty thousand deaths. I really don't understand why you guys refuse to work with us, why you refuse to engage with us. It's really disheartening to see our supposed leaders, leaders, our adults, continue to lie and, and be just so disingenuous. I really, I really don't understand it. And regardless, people are going to look back on this moment and, and see that you guys refuse to take a stance on this issue. And I think that that is really disheartening because you guys should be doing better. You guys probably have children of your own. I don't understand why you wouldn't want to fight for all children of the world. It, it doesn't make any sense, and I think you guys should really think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Adon. Next up is Ahmad Omer, followed by Emily Mahmoud. And then after that, it will be John Mosher. Wait, are you?
I'm Ahmad.
No, I know, I had a question of staff. Is he? Says, okay, okay. All right, sorry about that. You have your three minutes.
Like I said, I'm Ahmad. You guys have seen me before. We're here to ask for your support of a ceasefire resolution in Palestine. It's kind of hard to see where you guys are at. You don't seem to take a position in either direction, which is kind of hard to gauge what I should say to you. I'll just say that Israel has never been shy about the fact that their whole plan is to colonize Palestine, to take over their land through means of force. And even saying that sounds too friendly, because what it is, is targeting civilians. And what's, what's the targeting of civilians? That's the slaughter of innocent children. And perhaps you support that, maybe, you know, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt. Maybe you have some legitimate reason to support Israel. But even if you do, I don't understand what it has to do with United States tax dollars. You say that these are international matters, but none of this could happen without our money. And I don't think any American wakes up and goes to work for the sake of supporting Israel. I think that's kind of- I think that's kind of absurd. I think if you gave us all 100% tax credit, you give us back all the money that we paid in taxes last year, nobody would take that money and send it to Israel. So, just asking you to voice that opinion for us. Thank you.
Thank... This is Emily Mahmoud, followed by John Mosher. I think you want to speak again? No?
Well, actually, I wanted to speak on each item separately.
Okay. Okay, well, I think we already have your discussion on the record. Thank you. Sorry about that, Emily.
No worries. It's all good. Hi, my name is Emily Mahmoud. I'm a student at Cal Saint San Marcos and a resident of San Marcos. Thank you guys for hearing us out today. I want to echo what my fellow classmates and community members are saying, which I call for a, you know, I ask you to put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. I know that you think that it's outside of your control, but like Adon said, many cities in America and in California have put out ceasefire resolutions. Also, I want to echo that because like whatever side you stand on, like, I don't know that, right? But for both sides, it's been very...people have lost lives on both sides. Obviously Palestinians have experienced detrimental loss and a genocide. But Israelis have also lost their lives because Netanyahu refuses to accept the ceasefire deal. And there has been lots of Israeli protest. So I think that we can see that that's a truth and that many people are upset with this and that we just ask you to do a simple thing. I mean, 70 cities, over 70 cities in the United States have done this. And, you know, that's what we ask of you. I also want to address the encampment ban that was passed here in the summer. I was able to meet someone that is houseless and was displaced. I want to say that the support services here in the city are lacking. I know that you guys are doing the best you can, and there are people that are working to help people out, but there's just not enough resources here. The process is slow and people are put in unsafe situations. For example, a man I know, his name is Josh, and he had to stay...I don't know if you know where Barham Drive is? But he had to stay there, like 10 feet from the road with his dog. And just think about like sleeping there every night. Just think about that, like that's scary. And he couldn't, he couldn't leave. And the encampment ban put him in danger, and he's had to move multiple times. Luckily, he was placed, but he was placed in Vista, and my friend had to give him a ride. So, there really aren't the resources here. And in order to allocate those resources, there's no like assistance provided. You're really on your own. A lot of people don't have access to internet or transportation, let alone safety, or even ability to shower before you get into these shelters. So I just want to say that, I don't know if we could reexamine that policy or possibly look to push for more resources in San Marcos. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, that's it for oral communications. Next up will be reports. Sandag, we meet on Friday. Okay, League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove. Oh, oh, you filled in, okay.
I believe Councilwoman Nunez was there as well. And I think probably the biggest news that came out of that meeting, if you don't mind, I'll congratulate you and announce it. Councilwoman Nunez was elected to be our chair for next year, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
Excited for you. Beyond that, we did have an update and a briefing on just regional housing. And it kind of, I liked how they opened up to like discussion. They had like a little, they used some technology for some polling and stuff like that. And I don't know, Maria, if you wanted to add anything to that, but it was...nothing new came out of it for me, but it was a good refresher.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think it was a good start to a conversation. Hopefully, we can have more of it. I did wish we would have gotten a little bit more context in terms of where we're at, what's happening, and what are some of the changes that we can request. But I think it was very timely for us to have that. And if you don't have anything else, I do want to remind everybody that the league did do a legislative session update yesterday, and we do have the recording of it if anybody wants to watch that update.
I just had a question about what specifically were you talking about, housing? The lack of it, the state taking away the authority? Like, I'm just curious what the discussion was.
All of the above.
Okay. I, whenever I talk to elected officials, I feel like they all are frustrated like us.
They are. I have heard from very few that are, you know, that they're not against... or they are against losing that local control. And again, I don't think that everybody's necessarily against the concept or the intent of the ADU specifically, what we were talking about.
Yeah, no, it's the loss of control.
I think it's the loss of local control and taking the local voices out of that process.
Yeah, for sure. I agree with that.
And then, obviously, then the lack of resources, right, that's available to all of us. That was another, I think, piece that was, that came up.
Well, we can point back to 2012, May of 2012, as I always bring up, the end of redevelopment that actually did a lot of good for communities like ours. And then now we no longer have that money. So how do you continue to absorb the mandates when you don't actually have the money to build it? It's very frustrating. So, okay, moving on to North County Dispatch, or no, North County Transit.
Yes.
Yes, North County Transit.
We were dark in August, and our September meeting has been canceled.
Well, one thing you could talk about is now that the NCTD Plus just expanded a little bit, and you can use youth opportunity passes on that to ride for free, which is cool. And then they just, they just expanded it. It's on their website. I think the first day was the 8th, which was, was that Monday? I don't know, feels like it's been days ago. No, sorry, not Monday, I think it was Saturday. Anyway, on the 8th, I think their service did expand. Today is the 10th, so yeah, two days ago. And you can find that on GoNCTD.com. You can find out where their service expanded. I think it was some of the mobile home parks, right?
You'd have to go online to look. I think Target and Vista picked up some of the Nordahl area. One thing I have asked for is some basic numbers as to what we projected the ridership to be for the pilot, because this is a pilot, it's not forever. Well, hopefully, it's forever. So what the projected numbers are up to this point, and then what's the actual ridership? So hopefully, I might have that by next time, I don't know.
So last month, when I was at the San Diego EDC, San Diego North EDC dinner, they told me that the ridership had exceeded. So I don't know what those numbers are, but it would be exciting to see those numbers. Okay, all right, moving on to North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority.
Our August meeting ended up being canceled, and so our next meeting will be at the end of the year.
Okay, Clean Energy Alliance.
So Mayor, for just a second, when we were talking about RENA at Friday's...
I don't want to talk about RENA.
I know we don't. At Friday's Sandag.
Regional Needs Housing Assessment.
The Regional Planning Meeting. I spoke up about the cycle six because we're coming up to seven, and the KUKA approach that HCD and the state have taken, when we are in fact identified as a region, but different jurisdictions are assigned certain numbers of housing based on the jobs. But that suggests that those jobs are people that live in that area. So we talked about an example, I did this with the representative from Coronado, that all the jobs that the Navy provides on North Island were assigned to them, when in fact, they don't have any open space to build homes. It's owned by the Navy. So there's a lot of inequity in that. And really encourage the Sandag reps to, as we say, free us up to make local decisions. And if, you know, as an example, I think it was Coronado had a ridiculously high number...
A thousand, it's like a thousand.
When other cities were at our meeting were saying, "We have room, we'll take some of those numbers as a regional concept." And our own Sandag board shut it down by a weighted vote.
Just so you know, I was actually on that committee, I don't know if you recall that.
I remember that.
Yeah, it might have been before you were on the council. Actually, at the RENA allocation committee, we actually voted for Coronado's number to be lower because they don't have any space to actually build, and it's very expensive to build there. You can't actually even build affordable housing. I mean, I think it's 600, in excess of $600,000 in a city that's not as expensive as Coronado. And I think it was like three or four times that to actually build one unit in Coronado. So yes, all of the cities were like, I mean, for us, it was, I want to say, less than 20 less units. And no, the board majority took over and voted to, I called it, stick it to Coronado, to actually take that because many of those units would have been absorbed by the city of San Diego and the county of San Diego. So it was terrible to see that, but I was there. It was awful. Anyway.
Clean Energy, we met...
Clean Energy.
Yes, we met last week and discussed some of the issues with the Equitable Building Decarbonation Program, which is essentially as we build residential units. And also looking back to commercial, how can we make them greener so that they're providing a smaller carbon footprint as they go along? San Diego Community Power and Clean Energy Alliance have formed a group, which the state highly encourages within a region, and it's called the SD Regional Energy Network. And what that does is it opens opportunities for grant money that standalone entities would not be eligible for because they don't want to pick apart all the different smaller groups, especially when you get to Northern California. So we can then leverage as a region a significant amount of grant money that comes, not just from the state, but also the federal government, and then managed through the state. So that'll be something to look forward to. And we signed a purchase agreement with the Rancho Penasquidos Power Purchase Agreement and the Deer Creek Solar. So there is a hydro power plant out in Rancho Penasquidos, and we have signed a contract with them and another one with Deer Creek Solar. And some of that power is going to be used to provide electricity for the diesel plant in Carlsbad, which Clean Energy Alliance now is the sole provider for electricity. So we're trying to mitigate a lot of the fossil fuel use within our county, and we seem to be well on our way to getting that done.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I was reading something the other day, because I love to read things, and it said that AI uses a ton of energy. And I guess my question would be, now that we are moving to AI, how are we going to figure out how we are going to have enough electricity with the introduction of AI when we don't have enough energy to, or electricity, to actually just have every day-to-day... I mean, the fact that we still have power outages and shortages here and there and this tight market, how is AI going to figure into all of that?
Well, I think we're going to get John Mosher back up here if we go too far into the power issues.
This is crazy, I'm just saying.
So when we talk about clean energy, and I've said this before, and I said it at our meetings, when people get this idea that when we buy clean energy and we plug something in, that the electrons know what we want, and they work their way here from wherever they come from. Power is generated, and because it only exists in a fluid state, unless you have battery storage, which we know is insufficient now, and it's being a little more problematic, that the only way you can reconcile what it is you're doing is with a piece of paper that says, "We are only going to buy energy from a clean power source." So that is effectively what we're doing. We are required to go through entities within California first and then outside California. So we do have contracts. We have one that we started a year and a half ago with a company in Utah. And it is, they are doing geothermal. And it has become so popular that we kind of got backburnered on it because Cal Edison looked at that and said, "Hey, that's a great idea. We will buy a significant amount of that power when it comes online in late '25, early '26." But we still have the contract for it. So we are going to get that power, but the electrons don't know their source. They only know when they come out and turn on your blender or your television. So unless we get everybody in this country on contract for the minimal amount of clean energy that's required based on your jurisdiction, and right now in California, it's about just under 50%. And what that means is the three major providers, Cal Edison, SDGNE, and Pacific PGNE, they're required to have contracts for their customers, not for the CCAs, but for their customers. Their existing contracts for service have to conform to at least that minimal percentage of clean energy. But it's a piece of paper. Okay? And then everyone is required to have a certain overage in that to allow for high-intensity days like we've had this last few weeks, where we have to have a contract in place for more power than we actually need so that the state can then leverage that power to channel energy into different parts of California that are running short to avoid brownouts, blackouts. It is a, when I say it's a shell game, I don't mean that as a pejorative. I mean, it is trying to constantly move that P around so that the power comes on, that we are still abiding by the rules as far as clean energy, and we're still working towards that ultimate goal. And we are getting there, it's just a slower process. And I would just say, Mayor, it's a little off-topic here, but the nuclear power option is becoming more and more attractive. The safety, the safeguards on micro facilities are well in place. The US just issued a permit to fire up a dormant nuclear power plant because of the safeguards that have been put in place. And with nuclear fusion coming onboard as opposed to fission, which is the one we see with Fukushima and Three Mile Island, nuclear fusion uses essentially the power that the sun uses with hydrogen. So it's a clean energy, the byproduct is going to be water, and it will produce significant amount of energy to convert water to steam, to spin turbines, to give us all our blender so we can make our smoothie in the morning. End of my report.
Okay, thank you very much. City Council Business Visit.
Yes. Yesterday, we had a great one at Fluid Focus. So Fluid Focus, I'm just going to read from the script because we did a great job putting it together. San Marcos company that services repairs and tunes mountain biking suspensions. They work at all major brands and has years of experience in factory race team duties. Fluid Focus is growing and has moved into their second San Marcos location. They expanded square footage from 1,000 in their initial space to 3,000 square feet. The company's growing so rapidly, they're exploring expansion opportunities in Tennessee. And when we say exploring, they are really close to having that as a done deal. Customers are all over the world, the company does a lot of international business. So the average person that goes out mountain biking, they can establish a customer relationship, but they work with professional mountain biking teams. Most bikes the company customize or tune are high-end brands. They use, all parts and services are customized using CAD, and we got to watch them. They get really, really detailed when they start putting parts together and really making that suspension system high-end. And I'll explain at the end how they do that. Because it's a centralized location in North County and I-15, San Marcos for them is the ideal location. They only have three full-time employees, but they want to see their operation grow, and they hope to incorporate machining into their business in the future. And they are an innovative company, growing in a high-demand sports industry. Great businesses to have in our local landscape. So real quickly, that's Johnny on the right, fantastic. Tess and I went on that with Amanda, and Johnny and I kind of wandered off because I like working with my hands, and so we geeked out a little bit on some of their things. So if you look at that component he's holding in his hand, it's a shock absorber. But on the right, the little nodule that sticks out underneath that green circle, that is the key right there. That is part hydraulic fluid for the shocks and then a gas. And what it does is it has a free-floating piston on the interior. So as you go over a hard object, you would see the suspension system compress. That keeps effectively a balance in that suspension system. So for the rider, they know they're going over the objects, but they're not being jarred. And they use precision work. So on the left, the brass item is a factory piece. They drew out exactly what they wanted in that. That's actually the piston that separates the gas from the fluid. They drew out what they wanted, sent it to a machine shop, and on the left is the end product. And it has some of the deficiencies that the factory item has, they've been removed. They use very high-strength metal, O-rings, very, very precision, down to the tens of thousands of clearance level between the piston and the cylinder to ensure that there's always good compression, it's equalized, it's balanced. And for those people that are really serious about their mountain biking, they're going to have a great ride.
Fascinating.
It, I'll tell you what, you just watch it, you start saying, "Hey, wait a minute, this is..." There's a lot more to it than just going over and hitting rocks and logs. Because if you do that on a regular basis, and I have friends that mountain bike, that is the negative side to it. You may fall off once in a while, but you can, you know, strain your back, arms, legs. This takes away a lot of that issue.
They probably do a lot of work on the bikes that are... They probably do a lot of work on the bikes that are over at our new bike park, Bradley Park.
They talked about that. They had some bikes there. One of the owners, or one of, actually, the manager, Ryan is, I think it was Ryan in the middle, or maybe Griffin on the left, they had their bike there. And this bike looked like it was found in an alley somewhere, but purposely, because he takes it out and he rides it. But it is a high-speed piece of equipment, because it's his bike, and he knows exactly how to tune it up. Those are very interesting people.
Cool. Okay, Council Commentary. I looked up the date. We have the community CPR class. I think you can sign up online? Yes? November 9th at 8:30 a.m. It's a Saturday. So everyone should be able to fit that in their schedule. That's happening. Anything else? Yes, Councilmember.
So Alan, no need to get up, but before the Supervisors' meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30 until 9 o'clock, is a 911 memorial out in front of the County Admin Center, sponsored by Supervisor Joel Wigan. So if you're up early, a lot of us are, grab a cup of coffee, head down to 1600 Pacific Highway. There'll be a memorial service, and then it will adjourn, and they'll go in and take care of their business and get that climate action plan approved.
7:30 to 9:30, you said?
7:30 to 9 o'clock.
9 o'clock. Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you. This meeting's adjourned.